Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting. It is Thursday, April 19 at 5:30 PM. And tonight here for the meeting on our board, we have Dale Hansen, our business manager, Terry Rhodes, board member is excused, Jeff Nelson, board member is here, Alan Grunig, board member is excused, I'm Kathy Chris Jansen, board member, Roger Pulsifer, board member is excused, Steve Norton, superintendent, Randall Bagley, board member, and Larry Jepson, board member. And we're going to go ahead and begin with the pledge, and we invite you all to stand, and I will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our mission statement is, our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world. And tonight, we are really excited to begin with a student presentation. This group comes to us from the Mountain West Strings, is that correct? And Rosemary, who is over the Chamber Music Project, is just going to give us a little introduction to the Citronade Quartet.
Well, my name is Oliver Hanks, and I'm from the Chamber Music Society of Logan. I'm the director of the outreach program. And we're not here as much as a lot of Western students have general projects. Um, we're there, um, we have, what we do is we bring them to students from sixth grade to 12th grade throughout the process. And we audition them and call them, and we look at them for seven months a year. In this group here, we have Jason and Katie and Peter, and they are the winners of the competition that we had, they are the middle school, uh, division winners, and they're going to play a little bit of music. Enjoy.
Here in our district, we believe that academics helps make us smart, and sports help make us strong and healthy, and music helps make us more human. And so, we appreciate you bringing this to our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we're going to just change things up a tiny bit tonight, and I hope this doesn't ruin anybody's evening. But we have to have four members on our board in order to vote on things, and that's exactly what we have, but one member of our board has to leave a little early tonight, and so we're just going to do our action agenda where we're going to vote on a few things before we do the recognitions. So, sit tight, and we will hurry as quickly as we can to get these taken care of. So, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and I will take a motion for the consent agenda to be passed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be approved. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on that then. And we do vote electronically, so you can kind of watch and see what happens up there.
Okay, all the votes are in, and they are unanimous in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right. On our action agenda, first of all, we would like to have the approval of the new clubs at Skyview High School. And Mr. Hanks, are you doing that?
You have the two clubs that we've given you the information on. We're hoping to get approval on those. I've got some individuals here, if you've got questions about those two clubs, we can answer those. They can answer those.
All right. Any questions? All right, I'll take a motion then to approve the new clubs at Skyview High School.
I move that we approve the two new clubs at Skyview High School.
I second it.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the two new clubs at Skyview High School. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
They really want to speak.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, the voting is all in and unanimous in favor of the motion.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Next, on the action agenda, we have a request for the approval of the Intech 2019 School Land Trust Plan. There you are.
So, last, or a couple of weeks ago, I brought this plan for your review. It has previously been approved by our Parent Involvement Council, which serves as our Trust Land Committee by our governing board, and we now seek your approval.
Are there any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the Intech School Land Trust Plan.
I move that we approve the Intech School Land Trust Plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Intech, Intech School Land Trust Plan. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
The voting is all in and unanimous in favor of the motion. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a request for approval of the cash receipts and donations and gift policy revisions, and Dale will do that.
I have that. Yeah. It's been a little while since we've talked about this, but this was part of the Title One Audit that we had, and there was these requests of changes in our board policy to require that the district protect themselves so they're not cashing personal checks or having employees receive payments to them within, in their own name. So, for the cash receipts, on the third page, there's an addition there that says, "All checks received must be written in the name of the school district or individual's school. No secondary party checks shall be deposited into the district or school checking account." And then also on the donations and gift policy, on the first page, we added the paragraph that "All cash donations received in the form of a check must be written in the name of the Cache County School District, Cache Education Foundation, or an individual's school." Again, so it doesn't allow contributions being made in the name of an individual soliciting donations or whatever. Should come in the name of the school district. Those are the two changes that we wanted to make in the policy.
Okay. Are there any questions for Dale? All right, then, I will take a motion to approve the cash receipts and donations and gift policy, policies.
I move that we approve the revisions of the cash receipts and donations and gift policy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the cash receipts and donations and gifts policies. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, the voting is all in, unanimous in favor of the motion.
Okay. Great. Okay, now we move to the fun part, which is why you're all here. We are going to be recognizing some students and teachers and even the member of our district office. So, we will begin with our FBLA Public Speaking State Champ, Lauren Giddings. And this will be presented, she will be presented by Joseph Johnson.
Hi, I'm Joseph Johnson. I'm the FBLA advisor to Ridgeline High School, and this is Lauren Giddings. And Lauren Giddings is a member of the FBLA Club Presidency. She has served on that this year. And Lauren has gone to multiple championships, multiple competitions this year, and has always come out as the champion, and especially most recently at the FBLA State Champion for Public Speaking, where she presented her speech and won that championship. Lauren Giddings is not just in it for herself, that's the great thing about Lauren, is she really focuses on competing and being the best, but she also is more than willing and helpful to go out there and to mentor the other members of the FBLA Club, to help them compete at the same level that she competes at. So, we just want to congratulate her. We're excited that she'll be competing at Nationals this year in Baltimore, where she has a great opportunity and a chance to win there as well.
Yeah.
Let's have them stand. Oh, thank you. So glad that you're here. Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize the 2018 HOSA, H-O-S-A, I hope I said that right, Future Health Professionals. Skyview took first place in state and gold, uh, gold status. And this will be presented by Cindy Parkinson, their advisor, and also the new vice principal at North Cache for next year, so congratulations.
Correct. Really excited. Okay, so I'm Cindy Parkinson, and I am the current HOSA advisor. It's HOSA Future Health Professionals. It used to be just an acronym, which stood for Health Occupation Students of America, but no one understood what that was. So, they decided to help clarify it, so now it's just HOSA, Future Health Professionals. I'm going to pass the mic and let each of these individuals tell you who they are by name. Most of them are in my HOSA presidency. I have two that are HOSA members that excelled at our state competition. Not all of our presidency members are here today. They have jobs and other commitments that they had to be too. So, I'm going to pass the mic, and then I'll kind of tell you how they did.
I'm Chandler, I'm Chandler McClellan, and I'm the vice president.
I'm Caden Vance, and I'm the president.
I am Nadia Fontecheco, and I am the Competitions co-captain.
I'm Shaylee Mir, and I'm the academic officer.
I'm Katie Larson, and I'm the Service and Socials chairman.
I'm Alana Elston, and I'm just a member of HOSA.
My name is Jacqueline Martinez. I am also a member of HOSA. Did you want us to explain what we did? Like, yeah, I'll do that.
And Jackie and Alana are also, they're in my Mesa presidency as well, so I'm the Mesa advisor, and they've held leadership positions in that as well. Okay, so, um, out of Skyview this year, I'm really proud of my presidency. They've worked really hard, and they've done a variety of activities. They put on planned and sponsored, and put on for the first year, our HOSA Hallows, which was a Halloween carnival, spook alley, kids carnival, and the money was raised to donate to NAMI. And NAMI is?
The National Alliance for Mental Health.
Just checking. And so, the, in, the national HOSA, they choose an organization that all of the HOSA organizations give time, education, donations towards, and NAMI, this is their second year. And I think our HOSA Hallows Carnival Haunted House was, was pretty darn successful. We even had some high school kids coming out there with some tears, straining, you know, because they were so, had such an authentic experience. So, that was awesome. We've had lots of socials. We went, we're here because they went to state competition and performed extremely well. I'm super proud of them. There were only two chapters in the state that achieved gold status, and Skyview is one of those. We also were the leading school in the NAMI National Service Project, which I kind of just explained. And we have another, we're going to still continue and do another follow-up fundraiser before these kids are finished this year. Our Crystal Apple Award this year was Caden Vance, so wave. We did end up with two first-place state championships, so they had gold medals, so they were the state champions. We had two, two silver medalists and a bronze. I'll just kind of run through those quickly. In nutrition, a nutrition knowledge test, Alana Elston, step forward. She is the reigning state champion. She actually, last year was the bronze medalist, and this year she is the state champion, and she will be competing in Dallas, Texas, the last week of June. And it's actually an international competition now. It used to just be national, but now it's at the international level. So, that's Alana. And then we have another state champion, Chandler McClellan, step forward. So, Chandler is our state champion in dental terminology, and he has his sidekick, no, Cody McClellan, who's not here, he's, he's working, I'm sorry, Cody Sorenson. Well, they could be. Anyway, they've been twins all, okay, so we have Chandler McClellan and Cody Sorenson. Chandler's the state champion, and Cody, who's not here, is the silver medalist. We also have Katie Larson, step forward, and she is the bronze medalist in medical spelling, terminology, sorry, sorry, there's so many, I was just going to say, okay, Katie, I kind of prepped you, so, what's your favorite medical term?
Wait, you really want me to say it? Pan-hysterosalpingo-uh-uhphorectomy.
So, uh, so pan-hysterosalpingo-uh-uhphorectomy. Nice, nice. Okay, and then we have Jackie Martinez, step forward, and she's our, she's our master speller. She's our medical spelling silver medalist, so I'd like you to spell that for them. Pan-hysterosalpingo-uh-uhphorectomy. I'm totally kidding. I'm totally kidding. But I bet you she could do it if I hadn't put her on the spot. So, to sum up again, we have two state champions, gold medals, two silver, a bronze, and then 31 of our students ranked in their top 10. So, they were a top 10 in their event, which I'm super proud of. Our HOSA Bowl teams always do very well, which is a knowledge, kind of overall encompassing knowledge trivia event, with anatomy, anatomy, physiology, terminology, medical careers, gosh, I'm not even hit parlay pro, all of that. Three of our teams, out of 66, ranked in the top 10. So, I'm just, I'm just really, really proud of my, my HOSA leadership and my HOSA members that have excelled, as they do every year, and have represented Cache Valley and, or Skyview and Cache County School District so well. And I'm, I'm going to miss some, I'm going to miss them a lot, so.
Come back, you need to have a picture. Are there any parents of these students here? We would like to recognize you as well. Will you please stand, parents of these students? Oh, they just came by themselves. Okay. Congratulations, that's awesome. All right. Next, we would like to recognize the Utah High School Athletic Association for a Speech and Debate Coach of the Year, Gordon Peer from Green Canyon. And you've got to explain to me, how does speech and debate fit into the Utah High School Athletic Association?
Activities.
Activities?
Hi, I'm Dave Swentz, the principal at Green Canyon High School, and yes, it is, it's a part of the Utah Activities Association. Well, sometimes we always refer to them as, or as athletes and sports, but forensic falls right in that line. One of the things they don't do is they don't have academic all-state for debate, but that's because they're all academic, but they do run a good mile. But anyway, it, it's my privilege to introduce to you Gordon Peer. This is his first year at Green Canyon High School, and, well, actually, I guess it's all of our first years at Green Canyon High School. It's his first year here in the Cache County School District. We were able to, he's, he has spent the last seven years at Roy High School, where he has taught political science and coached debate. You know, when you open up a new high school, it's very, very difficult to find, well, in any school, to find people who, or coaches who will, who can spend the time with debate. It is almost a two-season sport. Starts in October, ends the middle of March, and lots of tournaments, but we were able to find out that he was interested in coming to Cache County School District, and we, with his background, we were able to make it happen. And so, we're glad to have Gordon Peer here at Green Canyon High School. Some of the kind of cool things that have happened this year, under his direction, is that he had quite a few participants come out, and, and I think we had close to 60 or so for, for school. During the school year, they, they attend a lot of tournaments, and it was neat to hear from other principals that said, "Who's this, who's Green Canyon High School that's placing above some of these other teams that have been established for a while?" But he was able to take his team and earn enough points and enough awards to give him a diamond status, which is, to do that in one year, which is a, it's a, I guess, a, an honor of, of what you do as a, as, with, with accomplishment of the points that his, his, his kids have done. Anyway, one of the nice, one of the neat things that, that he has done with this team, he's, he's, the team has accumulated more than 200 individual trophies in the one year and have won eight-team sweeps, eight-team sweepstakes. He was able to take his team to region and win a region tournament this year, and also get a state runner-up at, at the state. Also, after that, the state comes up with the final rankings, and Green Canyon High School was ranked number one in high school debate teams overall. Did a fabulous job with, with the teams. He's a member also of the, the state, I guess it's the National Society of Debate, where he's a member. He helps organize tournaments, he organizes referees, he's helps, is a member of that, mentoring other coaches, and has done a great job with that. He was also named by his peers as a 4A Coach of the Year for the first year here at, at Green Canyon High School. So, there's a lot of things that he's done, but probably more importantly is he's a better teacher than he is a debate coach. He's done a fabulous job in, in the classroom. I hear numerous students that say how engaging his, his class, classroom is. He had, I just want, he had, he earned his degree in law and constitutional studies from Utah State University, received another degree in political science teaching from Weber State University, and attended the graduate studies at Gonzaga University School of Law. And so, he comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge, but he's able to, to break that down into neat experiences that kids get to experience. So, just want to congratulate Gordon Peer and the things that he's done at Green Canyon High School in their first year, so, congratulations, Gordon.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you Superintendent Norton for taking a chance on Yoka like me, and I have one of our students here who is also in the debate team, Chase Peterson, who's been part of that family. New school, new year, and they jumped in, they dug in and did amazing things. And it's my wife's birthday, otherwise she would be here, but I have to make sure I'd be remiss if I didn't thank her, even by proxy, for all of her juggling to help us do this, and so, yeah, thank you.
Gordon, do you have any family here tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. So, you better get home to that then. Okay. Next on our agenda is the UCET Outstanding Leader of the Year, and that is Tim Smith from our district office, who will be presented by Superintendent Norton.
Okay, we were going to present this award last week, and I didn't have very many here in the audience, so I knew Tim would want a great audience, and he's, he's probably going to take a while to forgive me for that, but, Cash, let me read just some notes about this prestigious award that Tim has won, then I'll just share some feelings from the heart. Cache County School District's Tim Smith has been recognized by the Utah Coalition for Educational Technology for his contributions to technology in schools, both in his district and across the state. One of the people who was instrumental, and yes, a man named Mr. Smith, who helped in putting out this material that we're reading, said, "Smith received UCET's Outstanding Leader Award, which recognizes administrators for using technology to make a positive impact in their educational committee, community." In Smith's nomination letter, he was recognized for organizing a program called Cyber Corps for the Cache County students. This program offers a class to train students on providing tech support. Once they finish the class, students from a tech support team to help teachers with classroom technology. Corey Stokes, project manager at the Utah Education and Telehelp Network, was one of the tech professionals who nominated Smith. "Tim is an amazing leader," Stokes said. Stokes said another important change Smith made was the creation of a survey to see if people were satisfied with the support they received from the district technology team. Since the implementation of that survey three years ago, Smith said the rating has climbed from 37% to 97% satisfaction. 37% to 97%. "That's been most rewarding to me," Smith said, "to make a difference in the daily lives of our teachers." Now, if you took a chance on this young man, he was over at Utah State University. He hadn't gone the traditional route to come into a school district. I've been in the district office for over 35 years. I counted as one of the very best decisions that I've ever had the opportunity of being a part of, was bringing him into our school district. Most of you know, he was at Skyview before he came in here, did a fantastic job for us there. But in coming into the district office, into the technology department, I have never seen anybody in my years in education have the impact that he did from the day he set forth in running our technology in this district. He won the hearts and the minds of those He won the hearts and the minds of those people he has the privilege of working with every day. And then with those hearts and minds in sync and coordination and, and with one effort in mind was to, was to turn the technology in this district into a real tool that teachers could use in their classrooms to help educate students. And they went out into the classrooms of this district. And I don't think there's, you could go and do a survey on any other area in our district and get 97% of the people who responded that they're doing a wonderful job. So as much as he didn't want to come up here and be recognized, he received this award earlier in a, in a meeting in a banquet where his wife was there, and we just want to represent it to, to Tim Smith and thank him for taking a chance on us also when he left Utah State and came to help us in this district. He's truly been a marvelous addition to this school district, and I just want to thank him from my heart, for all the teachers and all the aides and everybody else out there who use technology every day. This is the man who made it so that technology in this district is something we can look at and be proud of and know that it's gonna help every day in the education of our kids and you parents and, and students who are sitting out there. I just want you to know how much we appreciate the fact that he was able to come into the district and have such an impact. So I present to you Utah's Outstanding Technology Leader, Tim Smith.
I'll just say this, these kind of awards are a team effort, and my technology support team have just been fabulous, and they go out and do the hard work every day and they make me look good, so I appreciate them and, and all they do, and this is really theirs. So, thank you so much.
We need to get a picture. Tim, are you refusing to have a picture?
No, she's taking my picture.
Oh, okay, all right. I was gonna say, we're gonna take that award back. All right, now comes the really funnest part for me in the recognition, well, I shouldn't say the funnest, because all of them are really fun, but it is exciting to see the Teachers of the Year be recognized here in our board meeting. And tonight we have four, one from Mountain Crest, Nibley, North Park, and Providence. And we are going to go ahead and start with Sally Peterson from Mountain Crest. And she will, this will be presented by Denise Mortensen. Is that right?
Well, it is my honor to get to introduce Sally tonight. She is a speech-language pathologist at Mountain Crest High School, and she also does our transition program there. What our, our transition program is, is she's built from the ground up where she gets some of our mild-moderate kids to go out and learn life skills, how to get a job, how to build a resume. She's amazing at doing that. And our kids have blossomed in that area. And some other great things that she does for us is, she's always creative and loving to every student that walks through her door. She will put down whatever comes up and she'll just help any student that walks through her door. It's amazing. And she also is our key club. She is always busy doing something all the time, whether it's at school, home, I don't know how she gets any sleep at night, because she's always painting, doing anything. She also, she told me she loves Mountain Crest and is so glad that she gets to work at Mountain Crest. And I've known Sally a long time, being a coworker with her, and I always looked up to her and wanted to be like Sally, because she's Wonder Woman all the time. And now I get to work even closer with her, and she's just amazing, everything she does. And she always has great family support in everything she does as well. I think almost the whole back row is your family, right? So, so, but she's just so well-rounded, amazing, and helps with everything. So, Sally Peterson.
Denise said I wouldn't have to make a speech. You know, as a speech therapist, I can tell you, I started back in the 80s, and I started out in an elementary, at elementary schools, and I would have the nurse's office, I would have the, the end of a hallway with a chalkboard as my divider. I mean, I can tell you, I've been in some pretty interesting places. And then they told me when I came to Cache County that I'd be at a high school, and I'm gonna tell you, I went from little guys to big guys, and it was a little intimidating, a little scary, but I can tell you, it was the best thing that's ever happened to me. High school is awesome. The Mountain Crest administration is so supportive of special education, and it's even just tribute to them that me, a speech therapist, was nominated, because I can tell you, over the years, I, I don't know that we've always been thought about, but that just tells you about Mountain Crest. The faculty is so supportive, and I love the kids, they're awesome. I love going to work every day and being with them, and getting to work with Denise and Terry Cutler and Doug Snow, it's awesome. So, thank you. And Sally, would you have your family stand? We'll recognize them. All right, next we would like to recognize Sandy Curtis from Nibley, and Principal Rendles Walker will do that presentation.
As we got ready to come up here today, my mouth always gets kind of dry, but I've been a little bit worried about that ectomy thing that was going on over here, and I, I wanted to find out what they're removing, so, well, I'll talk later. I want to introduce you to someone who's very important in our school, and this is Sandy Curtis. She is Nibley Elementary's Teacher of the Year, and just to show her dedication, we have other people going away for birthday parties. It's her birthday today, and she's coming to board meeting. Now, there aren't a lot of people who would do that, but I congratulate her on her birthday and being happy to be here. She hasn't complained at all. She has got a lot of teaching experience. She's taught for 27 years, 14 of them in the Cache County School District, and most of those at Nibley Elementary School. And she's a big part of the things that happen and the things that we do at the district, or at the school. One of the things that, that she is very involved with, she's over our activities at the school, and so whenever we do a parent night, or a literacy night, or a leadership thing, Sandy is one of those people who is digging in and always has her brain going. I just want to give you an example of something we've had this year so far. Our literacy night, we did Charlie and the Chocolate Factory along with many other schools in the district. But on literacy night, we gave out over 500 Willy Wonka bars with golden tickets in 12 of them, and ended up having kids go to a party after that. We had the Bluebird there dipping chocolates for parents and for the faculty. We had Oompa Loompas dancing, we had quizzes, we had Cocoa Pods and nibs to show where chocolate comes from. We had a great night around chocolate. Last year from my side of the mountain, in our night, we had a real falcon, then a falcon or, or some people there showing us real birds of prey. Cowboy Parent Night, we had a jail with pictures that were being taken and all these things. But it's, it's her brain going and always spinning and saying, "We can do this better, we can do more." She's already hoping that we get a certain book next year, because she's got it all planned out as to how we're gonna do our literacy nights, so. But she's always going 100 miles an hour doing these things, and because of it, we have great, great things that happen in our school. And a big part of the dedication that she has, of course, is within the classroom with the kids. And she has a real love for the kids and for the, for not just in her own class, but in the whole school. We have, I have a couple of comments from some of her peers, and most of them mention that love and that caring. I just want to read just a couple of short ones. She said, I've, they say, "I've learned so many great things from Sandy that have made me a better teacher. She has an energy and a love for teaching that always shines. I look up to her and admire her ability to organize her teaching and all the school events and activities. Sandy is one of the most loving teachers. She is a great example of showing love to everyone around her. Sandy has a huge heart. Her love for people radiates. And Sandy is always willing to go the extra mile, even with everything going on in her personal life, she finds time to help our school." And I want to kind of tie in with that to kind of end this, to give an experience. It was with our literacy night, and Sandy's husband was in the hospital down in Davis County, and went down to talk to her and said, "You do not have to be at the literacy night, we can handle it," because she had everything organized and all the things going. "Okay, I might," or "I might not." I said, "Don't come, you can stay here, don't worry about it." Her husband was supposed to get out of the hospital that afternoon. Well, I show up at the school, and guess who's at the school? And guess whose husband got left at the hospital? I don't know how he finally made it home, but she was dedicated enough to make sure she was there, to make sure that everything ran well and that the kids and the parents and everyone were having the great experience that they needed to have. But Sandy is such a great person, I love working with her, I love the things she does, and one of the best things too, is that she works fairly cheap. All I have to do is have dark chocolate in my office, and it makes life better. So, our Teacher of the Year, Sandy Curtis, not only a peer, but a friend. I present her to you.
I know this has been said, and I'm sure from every teacher when they come to the board meeting, that it's never an award that we get by ourselves. It's our team, it's our staff, it's parents that come in early to help out, it's kids that want to do the extra mile by doing extra work at home so that they can achieve the, the good grade that they're wanting to get. And I'm just grateful that I, I work at a school where good things happen, great things happen. We strive to just love each other and support each other when, I've been gone quite a bit in and out for the last couple of years for the hospital things, and, and automatically I just need to make one phone call or text to one of my teammates, and Taylor, Kathy, and even my next buddy, Melissa, are ready to jump in at any moment, and we just work together as a family. And we call ourselves, this is our home away from home, because that's what it is. And I love what we do, I love what I do, and I, some people say that, you know, but teaching is just, you know, how do you, you know, earn a living and make, and make things happen? It's because it's, it's our passion, it's what we like, and that's what I love, and, and I just can't imagine doing anything else but what I do. And, yeah, I do work cheap, I love dark chocolate, so. Plan to have a little bit more later on tonight at birthday party. Thanks so much for this honor.
If your family is here, would they please stand? Next is, we'd like to recognize Keller, Kelly Bernard from North Park, and Principal Jack will be doing that presentation.
I just think this is a neat thing, to get to stand up here with someone like Kelly Bernard and to talk about what makes things happen in a school, and it's the, the people like Kelly who make that happen. It's very fitting that we should recognize her as the Teacher of the Year for North Park Elementary. I just want to describe a few things about Kelly to you. I think she's kind of this amazing mix between the Energizer Bunny and Nanny McPhee and all these other characters out, and Mary Poppins, all these other people out there that make a difference in lives of others, and I think that's amazing. There's, you know, Kelly does this by choice. Every year she chooses to go out and make personal home visits to her students. That just says something right there, doesn't it? And that's the way she treats her students and her parents for the entire time that she has them within her care. And she knows how to get things done. I can't quite figure this out, but when she sees a need, she just makes it happen. One of the ways that that, that looks at, at North Park, for example, is she's mustard volunteers that come from our retirement homes nearby. They come in for early morning tutoring to help her students who need a little extra help reading. She just saw a need and made it happen. And that's just the way that Kelly is. I see something that needs to be done, and I make it happen with a little bit of sparkly magic on the side. That's just kind of how she operates. And it's also helpful for me as a principal to be in the building, and whenever Kelly comes to me, it's usually something, it sounds something very similar to this. "I'm trying to figure out how to help so-and-so, and I've got this and this and this idea. What do you think?" And I just have to say, "Thank you for what you do for kids." And I just think that's what speaks volumes about Kelly and the way she does her work. Now, I'm gonna do this a little earlier than waiting till the end. Kelly also comes from a family of, a legacy of public service to other people, and I'd like her family members to stand, and let's please clap for Kelly and her family members. Within that mix, you see, you see a variety of public servants in different areas of our communities, and those of you who know Kelly's family know, know what I mean when I say that. And that's exactly how Kelly does everything that she does in her life. I just have a couple of comments that a few colleagues wrote that I'd like to share. Kelly goes above and beyond her call of duty as a teacher. She shares freely with others. She's always willing to mentor, support, and encourage others, and that includes her students, the parents she works with, and her teaching colleagues that she's a mentor and a friend to. She can actively engage students and keep them on task with a variety of strategies. She is so personable and helps to create a positive environment at North Park. She shares her ideas with other teachers, is enthusiastic, inquisitive, conscientious. Beyond the classroom, Kelly is friendly and approachable. She is always warm and welcoming to everyone. We're so lucky to have Kelly Bernard as a teacher of our school and a member of our faculty. Please clap one more time for Kelly Bernard.
Is that me that's doing that? Okay. I just wanted, I'm very honored to get an award for something that I love doing, and I really, once again, need to tell my family how grateful I am, because I can give so much in my classroom, because they give to me at home. And so I don't feel like I have five children, I feel like many years I have 30, 32 added on to that. So I am very grateful for what I do, and that I love to do it, and that I have people to help me to do it. So thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize Jill Kazair from Providence, and Principal Wilson will present this recognition.
It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Jill Kazair this evening as Providence's Teacher of the Year. Like the other principals have said, it's amazing to recognize the hard work that our teachers put into working for our students every single day. It's fun when I do these presentations, because I know a lot about teachers during the day, but then I'm able to find out some other things about them that I didn't know. So, I'm gonna share some of those things. First of all, Mrs. Kazair was raised in Bountiful and graduated from Vumont High School, and she taught guitar lessons, so that was her in into teaching. And one of her most famous awards until tonight is the first female bass player at Snow College. And we're talking the bass guitar, all right? But once she's told me this about her musical background, it makes sense, and I'll get to that in a little bit. But Jill went on- But Jill went on to get her associates at Snow College and then graduate from Utah State University with a minor in music. Jill has been with our district for 34 years. She was hired at Providence 34 years ago. Taught 12 years in first grade, 12 years in second grade, and she's in her 10th year as a fourth grade teacher. Kind of her notes to me, she said that she's been through two renovations. And I'd like to say that's in the last five years. And if we had more time, we'd go over how many principals that's been, how many teammates, secretaries, custodians, et cetera. Her colleagues have nothing but wonderful things to say about her. I'll just read a couple of quick things. Jill is a fantastic teacher to work with. She makes our PLCs even more fun. She's patient with students who struggle both academically as well as with their behavior. She does a great job remembering to reward students who make good choices and show grit. Teachers have made comments they love seeing the projects she displays outside of her classroom. She has an open door policy for all of the new teachers. They know where to go to get help. And she does a lot for the teachers' union. She's highly involved in that and has served in many capacities on that as well. Back to the singing. Every year, the fourth grade has continued the Utah Centennial Program. And last year, one of Jill's students, we should've videoed this and turned it in for money because this little girl was singing her heart out, and it was all because of Jill. It was just pure joy. So, I would like to honor Jill Kazir as Providence's Teacher of the Year.
Isn't this a surprise? It's really overwhelming to think that some people, as nice as the people I work with, would give me such an honor. I work with wonderful, wonderful people. I've got two special colleagues here tonight who have stayed for the whole meeting. Awesome. Thank you so much. They're so great. And to work with Mrs. Wilson, she's brought out the best in me. I also work with amazing people at Providence. Whenever anybody says that Providence is such a good school, I say, "It's a good school because it's a good community." And so, I've been privileged to work with those people and to grow as a teacher and to learn more and to get better. I always say that I need to keep going back until I get it right. So, I'll go back next year and maybe the year after that. We'll see how it goes. So, thank you so much for this nice honor.
Could we have Jill's family and school family stand? Thank you, Jill. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move into our public input time. And this is probably a really great time for everyone who doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting to escape. You're welcome to stay if you would like. And first on the list, we'll be hearing a proposal for boundary changes for River Heights Elementary and Mountainside Elementary by Gary Thomas.
Okay, just let me take just a couple minutes and paint a picture of what we're looking at at River Heights Elementary or in the neighborhood right around there. Currently, there is the Saddle Rock subdivision, which has 20 homes currently under construction, and 100% of those will be completed and occupied by August 1st of this year. We also have three homes to be completed and occupied by October 1st, additional homes in that same area. This is just north and just to the east of River Heights Elementary. There's another subdivision called Providence Meadows. This has 16 homes, and it is expected that a minimum of five of these will be completed by July 1, and that they will all be completed by December 1st of 2018. So, with that, I want to talk about one more. This is the interesting one. The Falls Apartment Complex, which is just behind Conserve's there, just as you drop off the hill, they have, there's six new buildings, three of which are apartments. Those three apartments will be 112 units, and they have been identified as government-assisted living already. And then, there are also, in addition to the 112 units for those apartments, there's another three townhome buildings, and that will be 22 additional units. And those, the apartments will be done 100% by, sorry, 75% by August 15th, 100% by November 1st. And the three townhomes with those 22 units all be completed by June 1st. So, with that, River Heights Elementary already has six portables on its campus. What I would like to do, what I'd like to propose, is that we take those apartments just down off of the hill and bus those students over to Mountainside. Mountainside has six empty classrooms in that school right now. If we were to do this, we currently have 29 students that are already at River Heights that would move to Mountainside. That would harvest one classroom for us right there to help with these homes that are being built and coming in. In addition to that, they have enough room over there to accommodate the growth of those apartments. Tim, have you got the...
Yeah.
Nevermind. You have, I think you have a map?
We have about six maps.
Okay, that last map, I believe, the one that says, it's got the combined both boundaries, and it just shows those two little spots. Those are the two little areas that we're talking about that would be going to Mountainside. Both principals are very excited about this opportunity. They both think it would be great for their schools. I've talked with transportation. Kendall said they have one bus currently that goes into Spring Creek that does not have an elementary run. All of the others have an elementary run. He said it would be pretty simple to take that one bus that's going into Spring Creek already and now give it an elementary run where it would swing up there, pick those kids up, and then start out through College Ward and Young Ward. So, what I'd like to do is be able to post this in the paper tomorrow, and then at our next board meeting, have opportunity for public input that would meet the timeline that we would need there, and then maybe take a vote on it at the meeting after that.
What's the route that they would take from there? Do they go out on the highway to Wellsville?
They would probably go, if you go just past like the fairgrounds, like 6th South or 5th South or somewhere in there, and cut across, there's a highway that would take you straight out. And yeah, that's, I don't know for sure. Depends on where other kids, you know, would be picked up in College Ward and Young Ward, or if that would be a separate run. But there's a pretty straight shot across. Years ago, we used to do just the opposite. We used to bus all of the kids from out there in Mendon into River Heights. So, it's just the opposite of what we did.
It goes straight west, that intersection where Woodruff Elementary is?
Yes, where that light is.
You'd go straight west there.
So, it's a really pretty convenient bus route.
You can see the road on that last map. It goes straight across the valley. It's south of the valley. It goes straight.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you have an estimate of how many students this would involve?
Like I said, I can tell you right now, it would remove 29 students from River Heights that are already enrolled and live in this area and would take them over. We really have no idea. You got 112 units with the apartments, and then another, what was that, 22 units with the others? But there's no way of knowing how many kids. I know, as I talked with Principal Adams, she said they just registered their first two students from that area, from the new apartments. They're starting to complete those units now, and they just added two students last week.
And that's all government-assisted?
It is. Brag-assisted, government-assisted housing, which usually means there's going to be some children. Some of those other apartments down there, when those first went in, we anticipated some growth, but those were a little more high-end, and they were not, there wasn't a lot of students that came with those. But because these are government-assisted, we think that that might be a different story.
So, will that eliminate one of the portables then?
No, no. We're just, what we're trying to eliminate is moving one more portable onto that campus, and that's what we're hoping to eliminate. But if we can empty one of the classrooms, then as these other homes just to the north and the east of River Heights are built, then hopefully that'll give us a little bit of room for growth. My guess is it's really only gonna buy us one year.
The answer, the long-term answer is adding on to that school.
Yep.
Alright, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Dale, the monthly financial report.
The financial report for March would be in board docs there for your review. Gone through that, and when you look at the detailed report, starting on page three, it looks very favorable in all situations there where revenues received to date exceed the percentage of revenues received a year ago at that same time, comparison to the total amount received over the year, showing that our current budgets are holding strong. When you look on the expenditure side below, it's just the opposite again, when the percentage of budget that has been expended to date is lower than the percentage of expenditure that had been realized a year ago at that same time in comparison to total expenditures for the entire year. And so, really, there's no line items there that I believe would be of concern. The entire budget is strong at this point. The last page of the report is a school food service cost per meal report. It's interesting where our number of meals served, which is about three-fourths of the way down the page, is about 80,000 meals more, meals having been served this year to date as compared to a year ago. And that also, the efficiency in creating the meals has actually increased, where in a snapshot, this is showing a 22 cent profit if it were, which it's not. Per meal, as compared to a year ago, it was 16 cents. And so, the program is running well. I think they've tried very hard to increase better menu items, but still have to stay in compliance with the federal regs on that. But that program is running very well, I believe. Nope, there's any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dale. Alright, I don't believe we have any board reports. And I have nothing this evening. Superintendent?
I think we're about ready to get negotiations going, aren't we, Dale?
We're scheduled to meet on May 8th. It's the first time we'll be together, so.
We're all working hard on the budget. I think it's gonna be a good year. Difficult when trying to figure out how the state wants us to spend flexible allocation, but we'll figure that out. Other than that.
Okay, great. Larry, Randall, do you have anything?
No, not tonight.
Did, were we gonna report on our sessions?
We'll do that at our next meeting.
We'll do that.
I was gonna say, why don't you wait till all the other stuff?
Yeah, is that okay?
Perfect, yeah.
You can go ahead and do yours if you want, but I thought it'd be nice if we were up here.
No, we'll do them all together.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you two for sticking with us.
Kinda lonely.
No kidding. Appreciate all that you do. Thanks to our district staff and superintendent. We really have a great district. It's fun to see all of the different things that are transpiring that are helping our kids to be well-rounded individuals as they leave their public school experience. So, since we are done with everything, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. No administrators were hurt during the process of going through this meeting, so Tim, you're okay.